One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. Call to order, public comment. Is there any public comment? From anybody online? I don't recognize, don't recognize the third person.
She's here for Fallula.
Okay. Fallula?
Yeah.
Okay. What's, um, what does this gentleman for?
He's here for, uh, Northfield.
Northfield.
A and R.
Any reason we can't jump to Northfield and then Fallula? Or should we?
Well, Northfield is first because it's the A and R.
Okay, perfect.
And there's no reason we can't jump to Fallula. The Chair of the Select Board had asked to be at the front of the agenda, so we indulged him. I also wonder if he is thinking we start at 6:30.
Okay. Well, then that's fine. That works out well. Why don't we start off with the A and R plan for Northfield then, please? Northfield Road?
We have a member online.
We have a third person online. Yep.
Thank you. My name is Ed McSweeney. I'm one of the owners. Looking for an A and R approval between two lots for Bray Ave. nine LLC. I don't know if you have the MyLine coming yet. The only change to the A and R lot is difference between the first and the lot A and lot five.
I'm sorry, if you could please speak into the microphone just for the people.
The only change is to the left of the common driveway between lot A and lot five. There was an adjustment made of a line adjustment, as you can see how it's kind of like a Z shape now, and that was to accommodate the Board of Health, so we could make sure we meet the lot requirements and everything for the septic system. Didn't change any of the frontage, the lot size was still the same, et cetera, et cetera. So it basically, the adjustment was so we could make sure that the septic system fit in and that met all, um, setback requirements.
Okay, so, just to refresh, these are the two that-
So it went from a straight line to this funky little weird line.
So these are the two that weren't included in the stormwater?
Oh, no, they're-
No, they're all included in the stormwater.
All included.
Okay.
These were the, so-
I'm confused. I'm not seeing a common driveway is the problem.
The common driveway is, is right to the right of lot A. So lot A is on the property owned by Mark Brightman.
Okay.
Which was not included in the original division of, or the original proposed division of five lots, which started off as two lots with then, three lots added within, then one lot more added with some parcel swaps. So, this land was, so the lot, outlot B was given to Mr. Brightman, and lot A was taken away from him.
Okay.
Where the whole thing came from Mr. Brightman. Essentially, this is in the stormwater permit. The, um, common driveway is right to the right. You can see the, the pin that's found at the bottom right corner. That's also the corner of the driveway. You can see it very lightly on the, we don't have the best copies because they come from the PDF. You can sort of see the line there. That's the lot lines for lot five, which is where the common driveway is between five and two. Or is it five and one?
I have the change visible on my computer.
Five and A.
For you, Mr. Allison. Here, they're angled differently because that's just the way the files are. But here, you can see lot A had, in the, before the A and R is straight, and now they're changing it to that Z shape.
Okay.
To accommodate septic.
So revised lot A is part of the piece that's to the right of the found pin?
Yes.
And the common driveway is to that property line, to the right of the pin, along that property line? Okay. And that's to get a lot-
Lot five, it's a real lot.
Okay. So Adam, do you see any great deviation from?
No, I mean, the, the, all the numbers work out exactly the same. It's just a janky line versus a straight line.
Okay. Did we have any input from anybody?
Uh, no one that provided any significant concerns.
Okay.
Lot changes to match existing septic system is the input from the Board of Health.
Okay.
So confirms Mr. McSweeney's-
Existing-
Statement. Existing septic approval.
Okay, there we go. Since we have Amanda remote, do you have any questions or input?
Uh, I do not, no.
Okay. Mr. Brenner, do you have any questions or input?
I do not.
Um, and nor do I, so I guess I'd be, accept the motion?
I would move to that we endorse the A and R for, what is the correct descriptor for this? I don't have it.
Bray Ave. nine LLC.
Northfield Road lots A and outlot B.
Okay, we can just say that?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if we need, okay. For Northfield Road lots, uh, A and outlot C?
B.
B.
I'll second that.
Excellent, thank you. Um, and because of the remote, we'll have to do roll call. All in favor, Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Aye for myself. Excellent, thank you very much. Happy building.
Thank you. And might I just catch up tomorrow with you when we figure this out?
Yeah, yeah, just, just give me a buzz or stop by. You know where to find me.
Thank you. All right. Public hearing, Fallula Road, um, this is a continuation, right?
Yes, it is.
So, um, we'll open that hearing?
You know what? I failed. Grab a bowl.
Recording in progress.
So while Mr. Anderson sets up, I will draw your attention to the email I sent out last Thursday. Uh, I don't know if you've seen this. It's a traffic study that the city of Leominster had done in reaction to the submission of the warehouse. I was contacted by the Planning and Community Development Director in Leominster and asked that the board consider conditioning the plan based on the traffic study. I communicated back to her that I was unsure the board had any real standing to do so, since the driveways for the project are located in the city of Fitchburg.
Exactly.
And that what is located in the town of Lunenburg is parking lots and some stormwater facilities and a building. But as a courtesy, uh, as I would hope folks would do for me, I said I would certainly supply the information to the board and allow you to make your decisions as you are the board, not me.
That was about this?
Yes.
Wow. I just assumed it was the previous warehouse that we had approved.
Well, no, because that, that would affect Lancaster theoretically.
Well, okay, sure.
Their, their concerns are the corridor on North Main Street from Hamilton to Route Two and, and the Whitney Field Mall, um, and the work that they convinced Mass Highway needed to be done and, and was done there and is still kind of ongoing, but, um, I'm sort of at a loss as to what this board could-
Yeah.
Would do in, in respect to that.
Exactly, and, and to echo your sentiment, I mean, it would be nice if, if we needed to reach out to another town that they would be receptive. Likewise, I'm not sure what we can do, um. Did they make this-
I'm sorry for interrupting. If I may, Haley Palzola on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
Could I just ask a question? I, I apologize, I'm not there in person this evening. Just, just to give you guys a little bit more background on this. So GFI, my company, prepared at the request of the city of Leominster a full traffic analysis for additional intersections that they had asked for. So it would be news to me that their board asked for an additional study. I wouldn't even know if, if we can rely on that information. They don't, they don't know the ITE land use code that we're using. They don't know the details of the project. How can they prepare a traffic study without talking to us about it? So I'm just curious, is the study that they prepared the one that we actually prepared and, and paid for on behalf of the city of Leominster?
Perhaps it was. Did you just submit it to them last week?
No, we submitted it a month or so ago, and I never heard back from Elizabeth.
Uh, so, let me just confirm at least who, who- So this was a study done by Kim Lee Horn?
Okay. So that, that's, that's news to us as the applicant. So without having a chance to even look at it, you know, I'd be hesitant to agree to conditions, even if the board, your board, was going to do that. I'm sorry that you guys are kind of in the middle of this, but, um, this is news to us.
No, and, and, you know, I, I think I would caution the board about wading into this too far. You know, really, the, the limits of this project in our community are stormwater related, from, from my perspective. There is a, a component of site plan that, you know, is legally bound by the, the board to review, but, you know, our, our interactions with the traffic flow and, and otherwise are essentially nil. I mean, it's all interior traffic, so I, again, I'm, I'm not the decider. I, I have the three members here who will do that. But if they were to ask me, I would say I don't know that we have a an interest or an obligation in this to, um, make traffic-related conditions. And especially where none of the impacts or alterations or conditions would be within our community. You know, we have as much right to tell the city of Fitchburg or the city of Leominster what to do as we do to tell, you know, Chaboygen, Wisconsin what to do. There, there's, there's no, there's no teeth to it in, in what I see. But, again, I'm, I'm not the board.
It's the first time you've seen it too?
Yes, it is. Um, and looking at it, again, I'm speaking off the cuff and having just, it's pretty much staying the same thing.
I don't think you're obligated to speak to it, quite honestly.
I'm hesitant to even say anything besides, um, thank you, Adam, for bringing this to our attention. That's, this is, this is a good one. Okay. Okay. I don't, I, without having fully read through it-
No.
In depth, I don't want to say- And I don't, I don't think anybody, I, again, was extending a professional courtesy to a colleague and- Nope. And I, again, would hope that if I had a request like that, it would be reciprocated. From our, my perspective, we've received our, um, final review from Graves, both for conservation and for, uh, planning. And I, there are no outstanding planning issues. And I don't believe that there are outstanding conservation issues, but that's not for the discussion this evening.
So what was the last, what was the reason we continued last time?
Uh, we didn't have Graves' final review.
Okay, and there's no, no concerns?
Uh, no, he, all, all of the condition, the concerns and, and comments from the initial review were acknowledged.
Okay, very good. Would you like to speak to any of them?
I guess not really much, besides what Adam's already, you know, hit on the Spark Notes version here is, um, you know, we continue last meeting contingent on getting, uh, final review from Graves, which we got last Friday, and it was pretty much a clean bill of health. I know we voted on the waivers last meeting, um, so I guess, I think we were gonna prepare a- Yeah, the, the board was, was hesitant to close the hearing without having Graves' input in case there was an additional, uh, comment or concern or, uh, potential condition to be discussed. You have the information now. The, I think, if I recall, the board didn't want to, uh, close the hearing and have new information come that could affect their decision.
And just, just because it's here, did Fitchburg have anything to say or request at all?
Um, since our last meeting, Fitchburg, uh, approved the projects.
Done.
Done.
Okay.
Uh, contingent on their, we're still waiting on their, uh, stormwater review to come back, but, um, it's pretty, it was pretty much a carbon copy of what Graves came up with. A few comments relative to their stormwater bylaw, but any changes that occur from that, uh, letter, if any, would be negligible within the town of Lunenburg or on the project in whole.
Very good, thank you.
Um, sorry, if you have a question, please go ahead.
I do, actually. Um, so us being a town and them being cities, is there any kind of a difference between the interaction? Between us-
No. And we, it, those are internal operational differences. You know, they have a city council, we have town meeting. They operate, you know, if you want a zoning bylaw, you do three re- it's, it's more how they process their city government. The statutory regulations for the Commonwealth apply universally, city or town.
Okay.
Uh, my question to the applicant, and, and I asked this in the hearing because I think it's important for the board to, to hear and consider this, is, has Fitchburg outlined what their construction inspection looks like? And expectations are, that sort of thing? Uh, not as we know of so far. The decision supposedly is supposed to be at least prepped in draft form- Okay. This week sometime. But in my past experiences with, uh, Fitchburg, it's pretty much followed the SWIP guidelines for the erosion control, construction management. And if there are certain criteria the board wants in addition to that. I'm knowing about through the process of construction, like, will they inspect the stormwater facilities as you get to bottom? When you install certain facilities, sort of like we have Graves come out at certain points. I guess what I'm asking because it seems redundant to me to have two separate engineering firms conducting an inspection. Yep. And if they're going to do an inspection where they have a majority of the site, I would propose to the board that we coordinate with the city of Fitchburg to have one engineer from one firm do the inspection, rather than have, you know, Jeff out there one day and have, they use, who are they using? So in the, uh, they use tie and bond usually for their stuff. You know, I'd hate to have, you, that way you're paying through the nose twice to have people inspect the same general things. Yeah, and in the past, um, Fitchburg has been historically low-staffed when it comes to DPW. DPW in the past has always been their, their gut check for construction-related activities. Okay. I know they're, um, getting a couple guys up to speed to start doing it again. Uh, but in the past, it's been pretty much, they only go out for certain inspections for stormwater, or for usually sewer and water. Okay. The facilities that they end up being responsible for. The stuff that they're primarily responsible for. Okay. So, to that point though, I, I think if, uh, the board wished to condition something that everybody touches base with one another, so then the future, it does change. Mm-hmm. Uh, the town is protected with their requirements as well as Fitchburg if they choose to do so. I mean, and if, if it seems that they're not going to inspect it, we would have Graves inspect everything on, in our portion of it. I mean, Yep. We're not gonna extend into the city of Fitchburg and look to have you pay for inspections there, but we would want to ensure that what we're responsible for is at least installed correctly. Absolutely.
Certainly, all reasonable. Um, and then also that begs the question, should we, look at some of our standard conditions to be deleted from this because it's mostly gonna be, I mean, they've already issued it. Can we see their conditions and-
Well, they haven't written a decision.
That's right, okay.
I don't know that you necessarily need to amend your conditions. I guess the, the ones related to occupancy permits and stuff, perhaps?
Well, like construction, that's, that's gonna be dictated through the Fitchburg approval.
Yeah, and, and that's, but we're, we're only conditioning the stuff that's in the town of Lunenburg. So there is a basin and a series of pipes and catch basins? Uh, there's an underground storage system, some catch basins, stuff like that.
Like forty parking spaces?
Yeah. And forty parking spaces.
So... Yeah, I would, I would hate to, to stick them with some conditions that, well, we can weave conditions after the fact if-
Well, you haven't closed anything, so you haven't-
No, I mean-
You can, you can eliminate conditions in your, in your deliberation period. If you're not, if you don't have any more testimony, you can start deliberation and start talking about the the decision.
I guess the question, since we have the applicant representative with us, um, are you guys in any rush? Can we, can we do the conditions once we have the Fitchburg conditions, I guess? Or is that being too cautious?
Um, it, I see that, that kind of predicament that we're, that you guys are in, so I think we can, we can be patient. I mean, I'm a developer, we're always trying to go quickly. So the faster we can, we can go, the better. Um, but I also understand the position. Is, could we get, uh, you know, a conditional approval, um, similar to what Fitchburg did? And then we can kind of just work on the decision afterwards, or is it done differently because you guys are a town?
I mean, I have a decision written. The board, the board's in, in possession of a draft decision. Chris is aware of what our, our standard- Your, your conditions are not absurd or excessive in any means necessary. And I think, um, if Adam and the board are okay with it, and Haley oozes well, your typical decision, uh, verbiage is not controversial. And I think if we do, if we get to a point where we get closer to construction and we have two conflicting, conditions, if you will, we can come back before the board and- You can ask for a de minimis change, you can ask- Exactly. For a, a, a full modification. I mean, I think there's, I, I think the- I don't foresee anything that Fitchburg's gonna come up with is gonna be drastically different from what this board comes up with.
True. Okay.
If that works for you, Haley.
I have a couple of questions, but-
Yep, that works for me.
But they're really about-
Thank you.
Fine-tuning conditions, so we can close the hearing first if you want, that's fine, or we can talk about-
Um, well, we haven't asked for any public input tonight, um, but I don't think we have any.
Always, always good to ask.
Um, Amanda, do you have any further input or questions on this?
Um, as of right now, no. I'm, I'm, have a pretty good understanding, um, so no, not right now.
Okay, then I guess, um, we're ready to close the public hearing?
Uh, I would move that we close the public hearing for, uh, looking for, 260 Fallula Road.
I will second that.
Excellent. All in favor, Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And aye for myself. We are closed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was wondering if to make the applicant's life easier, if we could, and I don't know, Adam would probably have the answer for this. Can we make our construction hours, uh, can we make our decision basically say our construction hours will reflect whatever Fitchburg requirements are? I hate to put-
I, I, I think that's something that I would suggest you put hours in, and if they don't line up and yours are more restrictive, Mr. Anderson can just file a de minimis change. It would be, um, that's, that's such a minor thing, and it's in an area where there are literally no residents. So-
You're good with that?
You know, seven to, I think seven to five Monday to Friday, eight to three Saturday are fairly liberal hours, and I don't think most construction firms are going to work beyond those. I mean, they're buttoning up between 3:30 and four most days, I would guess. If there's a crew out on the site at four o'clock, it's usually not a very good thing. Something went really wrong that day.
That's great, then. I just want to make sure that we, if we could save a trip back to us-
And, and with the de minimis change, um, the applicant doesn't even need to be here.
Oh, great.
That, the, they can write a letter, and if the board deems it de minimis, they can do it administratively. It's not even advertising. So if I had something the Wednesday before a meeting, you guys could theoretically approve a change like that.
Great. Thank you.
All right, so then construction hours were the only things. Anything else to fill in? No?
Nope.
All right.
So, if I were, um, be, be, I, I will move to, um, approve this, but do we, uh, do I give the construction hours in the-
You can say as written in the draft decision.
Okay, great. Then-
It was blank, wasn't it?
Nope.
Okay.
Adam put them in already.
Nice.
Seven to five, Monday through Friday, eight to three Saturday.
Excellent.
Then, um, looking for the right wording, cause- Okay. I would move we approve the, uh, stormwater permit and site plan approval for 260 Fallula Road with the conditions as put in the draft decision.
I will second that.
Excellent, super. Um, all in favor, Mrs., Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Good. Thank you very much.
So we'll get that signed and we'll let you know when it's been filed. Ms. Reed probably won't be back in town till after Thanksgiving, so it'll be in that following week.
You, have a good night. Okay. So we did that. So we've already done the review and endorsed for Fallula, right? That was just what we just did. And in hopes that Mr. Jeffries will join us, then when we go on to, uh, eighty, it's something?
Yeah, no, I can't print it, so you guys will have to come in.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry?
Right.
Uh, let's move to the decision for eighty-eight Mass Ave. So, the shopping center was approved by the ZBA, uh, we did a site plan approval. I was very happy with the closure of that open curb cut. What did we have for outstanding issues?
You didn't, I mean, you approved it. So this is reflective of the discussion and votes at your last meeting, including the condition that the snow storage shall not exceed, uh, exceed a height of three feet within a thirty-foot triangle of each side of the ingress egress.
Okay, so we did approve it, so we just-
Yeah, so it's really just making sure you guys are cool with what the decision reads as.
Oh, okay. I'm cool with it. Are you guys cool with it?
I, I'm almost positive I'm cool with it. I wanted to double-check because I failed to put it in my digital notes like I thought I had.
I think it covers everything we talked about, so I am good with it.
Okay, and I don't think we need a motion in a second, do we?
No. So you and Mr. Brenner can sign a copy of that to, or you can just do it when you come into the office to sign the other, it's up to you.
Might as well have signed the same one, yeah?
Okay.
I'm sure you've got one. All right, administrivia. So, ch-ch-ch-ch, uh, anything new on Pond View Commons?
Uh, they have selected a traffic consultant to do peer review, and they are reviewing bids or quotes for, um, a, a general engineering review.
Okay. So the master plan RFP, that, um-
Again, this is, I'm, I'm a meeting behind with this, I apologize. I said I'd have it by the end of October, but, uh, you have it now, and essentially, this would be what we post to try and get someone to bid on it. Uh, I wanted to make sure the board had an opportunity to review it and see if anything was in there that the board felt shouldn't be in there, or if something wasn't in there that the board felt should be in there. And I'm looking more at the scope and/or selection criteria than anything else. I mean, the purpose and the background are pretty much what they are. The scope, I think, is a fairly comprehensive and standard master plan-y scope.
What town did you start off with for the template?
Uh, it's a blend.
Picking and choosing. So when was this sent out?
To you?
In June, yeah.
Last Wednesday.
Okay. And when would you like to submit it? ASAP?
Yeah, I mean, as soon as, the sooner we get it in, the sooner we open bids, the sooner we have someone standing in front of us telling us how they're going to do public participation to get the master plan underway. As of now, I have anticipated that we would be hopefully putting it in the central register in December, which would have us starting probably April.
Okay, so we are having a meeting on 28th? Good.
Oh, of November, yes. And again, I have to find out what the advertising deadlines are, but, I mean, I'm not going to rush the board, but the sooner we do it, the better off I think we'll be.
So in what portion of this is the scope?
The scope is number three. Roman numeral three.
Okay. Like the fourth page. Nice.
You know, obviously, number four is the deliverables. If you think there's something in there that is amiss, I'm happy to talk about that. And, you know, qualifications and selection criteria, I'm also happy to discuss those if you think you would like to add or delete something.
All right. And basically, this is asking them to give us a dollar figure, and we don't tell them what we have for it?
No, we tell them what we have.
We tell them what we have, and they tell us how much?
They tell us that they can do this scope of project for that or not.
Okay. Have you guys reviewed it?
Only lightly. I'm not as comfy with as I. If we could wait till the next meeting for a deep dive, that would be, I would prefer that, but if Adam were to turn to us and say, "No, really, y'all, it would really be better if we could approve it this meeting."
No, I mean, I would rather have the board be fully supportive of what's in here and say, "We've read it, we like it, we understand it, we're, you know, we don't want anything additional, or you didn't put, you put stuff in here we didn't really want than anything else." I just think it'll make for a better project all around.
Excellent. Excellent. Amanda, anything different?
No, I agree with that. I read it over once. I definitely think it would be beneficial for everybody to kind of get a better grip on it, and then if we have any kind of discussion, to have it at the next meeting. I think that's perfect.
Okay. Very good. Zoning changes to manage growth. I assume that was the.
Yes.
Sewer. And yeah, I spent a good amount of time trying to figure out where I got that from, and I can't find it. I assume it's a holdover of one of the numerous misconceptions I had about planning that I gained from my early years here, in Highfield Village specifically. And we'll leave it at that. So basically, I think it is, it would behoove people that were interested to go to the sewer commission to look for a town meeting, a warrant article next May to revise, and if that's the thing. But as far as I can tell, that's the only thing that would protect-ish, I guess. And I only say that in respect to the fact that the charge for the sewer commission is to neither encourage nor discourage development. And that's not at all what Planning Board is about.
Correct.
Planning Board is about scrutinizing development and making sure it's appropriate and beneficial to the town.
Absolutely. And I, you know, the more I think about this, and the more I watch the comprehensive permit hearings, the more I pause. So in the hearings, I don't know if any of you have watched or attended them.
Well, most of them.
Mr. O'Brien has publicly stated that he wants this to be a public sewer, that he can provide connections to everybody along it.
Has he stated he wants to pay for it, or does he still want us to?
No, he said that would be within his scope of cost.
I saw that.
And I'm not making a value judgment on that one way or the other. The hangup becomes, those properties aren't in the sewer district. Haven't been in the sewer district would need to be added to the sewer district, and they're not part of the comprehensive permit, so there would be a wider discussion about that through the town, is the way that I would understand it. Again, that's not a value judgment, good or bad. It's just what I believe the process would be. And with us coming towards a master plan that involves public process, and as you read through it again, you'll see that some of our land use and some of our economic development chapters, elements talk about exploring areas that may be appropriate for expansion of commercial zoning or use. And so, to me, it's great for elected and appointed officials to discuss these things, but it's even more, colloquial say, mo betta butter, to talk about this on a wider scale and have a wider level of discussion of, I'll say, active individuals, because it's not going to be a wider town discussion. It's going to be a wider discussion of the folks who show up.
Well, not only that, I mean, inclusion in the district by the sewer regs requires a vote of the people directly affected, and it needs to be, what was it?
That's if they petition. But town meeting ultimately needs to, that's the installation. Town meeting would have to expand the district. You can't expand the district without legislative act.
So there's another issue. I mean, there's three, potentially four, different ways that they could run from existing to Howard Street.
Correct.
And some of them have extensive parts that are already in the district, some of them don't.
I believe he said he's running Chase Road to West Townsend to Howard.
Well, he said a lot of things. He's not doing anything right now.
Correct. I.
Okay.
That's the expressed intent. And one would have to believe that that would be a conditional part of any approval. And there was discussion at the last meeting about having plans for a peer review on water and sewer connections, and what that looks like and how one does that. So again, I think, I think there's a lot to be said about zoning changes that manage growth and mirror the installation of public utilities. I think also, there's multiple processes happening that will also look to address some of those issues. So I think it's important that we get as many voices as we can in that conversation. And I'm hopeful that the master plan process will be an opportunity for that.
Yeah, but that's six months plus down the road. I mean, once you get the contract, then that's going to take a long time. Deliverable, what, three months, four months? That's a big thing. We're at least six months out on that. I think, just my thought.
You're talking about on the master plan?
Like, yeah.
Yeah. But I also don't think that we're. I don't think that we're close to any manner of approval on the Pond View Commons project.
No.
I mean, the.
March, mid-March.
That's when the deadline is. Now, should peer reviews start coming back and there be issues and questions? It's entirely conceivable that the applicant could or would extend the timeframe to, well, to avoid conflict with not having enough information to make an approval.
This is all outside of our wheelhouse?
It is. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts. My gut tells me that there won't be construction on this in the spring.
I'd be really surprised.
Yes.
He's already got, he could start working the other subdivisions, though.
He could. But the subdivisions don't have sewer.
Right. I mean, this is as far as construction. But, all right. Does everybody understand what we've been talking about, why we've been talking about it?
Somewhat. I would like a, I understand everything that's been said.
Okay.
I am trying to put that together into a cohesive narrative. I don't think I had the full context on the very beginning parts of this discussion. And so I think that's the piece of component I am missing.
What I've been driving at is what Adam said that would be the benefit of this kind of a process is involving a wide, casting a wide net and getting a lot of people involved. That's what I've been trying to do with the boards and committees and commissions, and the master planning process, I think, would have a larger crowd. So we need public engagement, basically. And the reason I brought up the development versus not development is the sewer commission is not obligated, nor is it necessarily allowed, to look at expansion. Develop, they're not.
Their regulations instruct the sewer commission to be neutral on the impacts of sewer on the potential for development. So if a neighborhood were to come and say, and I think, I think it's 70% of the neighborhood has to agree to the installation of a sewer through survey.
I think that's what it was.
And so let's say, a survey goes down the table, here is a road, and each of those chairs is a lot. So there's eight of them there. And let's say that the chair at the end is a 25-acre parcel that is vacant. And six of the other seven chairs are like, definitely bring sewer down, because we don't want to pay for septic, we want to get our yard back, we want to put a pool in, whatever. And they all vote, and the sewer commission's like, "All right, great." And they say, "We're willing to take on the betterment costs." And the sewer commission looks at it and says, "Ah, but we're not going to support that, because that parcel at the end is now 25 buildable lots, because that sewer, you never would have perked it, but now you've got sewer, so we're just not going to support that." That's not their role.
Okay.
Or it wouldn't be their role to go and convince the other four chairs that the three who wanted sewer were right in order for the ability to develop that final lot. And so with this comprehensive permit going up Chase Road, none of Chase Road is in the sewer district currently. So even if the sewer happens to go by there, there's no ability to connect to it. So the town meeting would have to amend the sewer service area map to include those parcels, to permit them to connect to sewer. And what Matt has pushed for is a discussion about how zoning can impact the town and protect the town and maybe benefit the town in conjunction with the installation of sewage. So an example is Lanny's Orchard has petitioned for sewer previously. And I don't know how hard they've pushed, but the discussion has been there that it'd be great if we had sewer here, because we could do this, that, and the other thing at the little farm stand and really build up our business. And some of the concern and pause has been, well, what about this, that, and the other thing that could happen if sewer went in there? And that wasn't from the sewer commission, it was from other forces. But having that discussion as part of the master plan, as part of a wider public discourse on where the town is going over the next decade to two decades, is potentially more impactful than, you know, a three-quarter dozen public officials talking about it. Because, you know, they're all going to have their own thoughts, their own opinions, informed by their own, I'll call it baggage, I don't think any of you really have baggage.
Can't call it constituents either, can you?
What's that?
Constituents?
So it, you know, I think it just, it gives everybody a more solid base to go to town meeting or somewhere else and pitch that this is what we're going to do, or would like to do, or think is the solution to do, to resolve some of these concerns. Hopefully, that's a clear answer, if it wasn't concise, because I know it wasn't that.
It is, thank you. Anything from Amanda?
No, I don't have anything to add. I understand the points being made, but I don't really have a real opinion about it.
Okay, very good. And driveways, we're tabling for a little while?
Whenever you guys are ready, I'm ready to talk about driveways.
Was it?
That might be a good one to try and get ready for spring, so I don't need, we don't need to do it now, but it would be a good spring town meeting.
Okay, I agree. Yep. Minutes approval?
Sure.
We have five.
I've reviewed them already, but when you're done reviewing.
I'm good.
Okay. I would move that we approve the minutes for our meeting on 10/24, as well as the public hearings for the warrant article use table, the warrant article citizen petition, 88 Mass Ave, and 260 Fallula Road, all also on 10/24.
I will second that.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval of the for-said minutes? Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And aye for myself? Nice. Open space, so committee reports, open space. We met, well, we were scheduled to meet, oh, recently, I think it was last Wednesday, and we didn't have a quorum, there was only three of us. So we weren't able to have a meeting. Lunberg Municipal Building Design Committee. We haven't had a meeting for quite some time, probably two or three meetings we haven't held. Agricultural Commission. We had a fairly brief meeting almost a month ago. We got another meeting tomorrow, not tomorrow, this Thursday. Excuse me. We're trying to figure out what works best for the farmer's market. If anybody has any input, we'd be happy to hear it. We're thinking about what days work best for everybody. There's been discontent expressed with Sundays. They didn't work very well for us this year.
More vegetables.
More vegetables, yeah. I mean, some things we can control and some things we can't. And that happens to be one that we can't.
I'm just talking about more people who sell vegetables.
Exactly. Well, you know. Excuse me. So that's what we're in discussions about now. We'll look and start the market up again next June, maybe later, I'm not sure. So again, anybody has any input on hours, days?
I was very pleased with the market through COVID. There was a wide variety of vendors. You guys did a good job of bringing out individuals to provide some manner of entertainment of some sort. It's always nice to see craftspeople, but I go to a farmer's market for food.
Right.
And, and like, I love, I love that Greg is there with his blacksmith stuff. It's wonderful. I think the different craft vendors you have are a value add to the market. It's not going to get me personally to the market. I want to go and get fresh food.
Understood.
And, you know, I think more hours is always good, and I know that's hard for vendors, but I think a three-hour window is really helpful.
So you're for the three hours?
I am.
Okay. We've been cutting down.
But again, I'm not the one there lugging my stuff and hanging out and trying to make sales. So I understand why there would be limited, but.
So that's it on the AgCom? Capital Planning Committee?
Oh, boy, howdy, it's capital planning season.
Fun stuff.
Since our last meeting, we have met on October 25th, November 7th, November 9th. And I believe that's it, sounds right. We have heard all of the presentations from the various related departments at this point. And our next meeting coming up, I believe, the Monday before Thanksgiving, we will begin, we will begin the discussion of actually putting things in rank order. I mean, there is so much info there. I don't know how much detail people want beyond where we are in the process. I can share tons, I can leave it there.
I'm very familiar with the capital planning process and I somewhat keep abreast. But Amanda, would you?
I mean, if there's a consolidated version possibly, that might be helpful.
So this year, the, just kind of doing a very, very high level. The school department, facilities, the new facilities department, or is it a department, or what are we?
It is, it is its own facilities department.
Okay, I didn't know if that was a correct term for it. Great. The school department, facilities department.
Oh, I'm sorry, school, school department facilities is separate. I thought you were talking about the new facilities.
No, I was. No, so I meant, so people asking for stuff this year.
Yes.
School department, the new facilities department, DPW, and the fire department. The police department does not have any requests on the table this year. We have seen all of their 10-year projected plans. I will say that with the new facilities department director, we have heard such phrases that make the angels in my heart sing, such as ma- maintenance pla- like annual maintenance plan and painting plan to take our, all the physical things in our town and the buildings and everything and upkeep them. And make sure that is happening. And that was very, very pleasant to hear, and I think will be a benefit from the creation of that new department.
Nice.
There's more requests than there is money, which is not surprising. And also not surprising, I do not think the board is completely unified on what each member or committee is completely unified and what each member feels is the most important. And then it goes to the town manager anyway, and she may make further alterations. So we'll see how it goes.
Yep.
Does that kind of hit the high level for you, Amanda?
It does, yeah. That's, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And just to follow along in that spirit, we've got a warrant article that is looking to clarify the capital planning process at town meeting tomorrow night.
Right?
Yes.
All right.
I apologize. We will eventually be looking at the prioritization system that are used for the initial reporting to the members of, of kind, we're giving, we're given a number. And that number, like, and that number is based on a set of equations that tell us just by this algorithm what rank these fall in. We're not required to follow that rank, but it's kind of an informational thing. And we will be reviewing that process as well for the next year.
Looking to adjust the algorithm in some ways?
Yes. So if there is input on that, and if people want more detail, I'm happy to share the documents I have on that as well. But that will be a step in the process as well.
So just some history on that, that algorithm. I forget exactly what it was, some institutes.
Cullen Center, if I'm not mistaken.
So I, I wasn't a big fan of that. I think I was one of the first groups to do it. And we went through some transition. I kind of felt that, that the community members that are, that are in that group, the representatives from other boards, except for one, I believe, right? So I think that kind of the feely town, town feel would be appropriate for those people, for that group. And then that Cullen Center thing should be used by the town manager. It's just, that was my thought.
And, you know.
I found the numbers interesting.
Yeah, I didn't think.
I don't know, my, my thoughts on prioritization do not necessarily reflect those numbers. I'm not looking to hedge here, I just haven't finished.
And I think that there's some reliance on the reporter or the requester to generate those numbers. So my ability to make an argument why I score in one category might not be the same as the way you view a project in that category. And maybe not the same as the way, you, you and I may disagree with the way he views that category. So, you know, I think there, it's a data point, but it's something that I think leads to additional dissection.
I think it's more like comparing us to Pittsburgh and Lemon stuff. Anyways, capital planning, that was the end of your report?
Yes.
Economic Development Committee?
Economic Development Committee met last Thursday. And we reviewed, there was the, so we were going to meet with the Lunenburg Business Association. And that meeting did not have quorum, but members of the two groups still met and just talked about things. And so kind of the results of that discussion were brought back to the Economic Development Committee as a whole. As I double-check my notes, I didn't review them quite as tightly. There was, I mean, there was talk about kind of the progress of things like Lunenburg Central and some, and other developments within town. Mostly Lunenburg Central, everyone going, wow, that went up quick. There, it was brought up with Lufa Farms, the possibility of some members' desire to create, to see if Lufa Farms and Brixmore would be willing to work together to create another road through their properties. And brought the reasons that did not seem like it, did not seem likely like it would happen.
It was sort of an evolution to the Chair of Parks' request to this board.
Mm-hmm. Again, those are the big takeaways I would give immediately, with the kind of notion that the Economic Development Committee wants to continue to work closer with the Lunenburg Business Association and help them kind of work towards their goals.
That would be great, but is the LBA a town thing?
No, but they are the representative, collective representative of businesses. So if, I think the, the idea is, the LBA has been formed not only to allow businesses to support one another, but to allow businesses to give back to the community. And they do a lot of community-focused events.
They do?
They do. They did a charity golf tournament. They did, they organize and operate the trunk retreat that happens at the high school.
Very popular.
So what the Economic Development Committee is sort of stated and is working towards is how the town can be a partner in giving back through those community events. How they can encourage, foster, support, and maybe streamline some of the happenings of those community events and ways that they can maybe facilitate additional partnerships with groups like the Lions Club or other, other folks who want to do community events that would have a demonstrable benefit to the residents of the town, but may have a business component, may have some financial needs that the town can't put forth, that perhaps the business community could find a way to raise or donate services for. You know, and I, I think things like the Miles for Miles Race that was established for a long time, went away, I think maybe coming back in the spring. There's been discussion about the town fair, whether or not that was something that the LBA would like to see come back. You know, feel-good things, things that, that people like, things that people say, oh, why don't we do that anymore? How come this happened? And, you know, we can point to COVID, we can also point to, it's, it's difficult for the town to organize those things these days as, as the community grows. And so getting support from service and business organizations helps really make those things happen. And it gives them the opportunity to give back.
This, the back and forth of this partnership and these discussions has also already yielded some results in terms of getting feedback from the business community of things, from a broader section of the business community, about the things the town may be able to do, really to help foster business growth within Lunenburg.
Thanks. Excellent, excellent. And I remember, I remember, and I don't remember what it was for, but I remember contacting the CDC in Pittsburgh, the Community Development Center. And they, they're open to doing projects in Lunenburg and working with Lunenburg.
Yes.
So that might be another partnership to seek out. And what other CDCs are there locally? Do you know?
I don't. And I think the one in Pittsburgh happens to have a good microloan program, which is where they tend to, and I think that's probably the, the success they've had in Lunenburg.
Okay. Very good. That was EDC, Stormwater Task Force.
We have not met since the last meeting, we're meeting this week.
Correct. Okay. MRPC?
MRPC, we did meet on Thursday, November 3rd. Not too much more to share. Basically, everything was about promotion of these workshops that they want town employees or volunteers to sign up for. I believe they sent out surveys to, to town managers about what kind of, I guess, support they can give to town employees and town volunteers, just in terms of like lunch and learns and, and, you know, any kind of sharing of information that they can. So that was pretty much it for MRPC.
Okay. And how about MJTC?
MJTC, we did meet on, it was last week, Wednesday, the 9th. That one, I suppose all the information is sent to town managers. I'm sure Adam might know more than me, but there's lots of grant money coming from Massachusetts, that towns are taking advantage of. So I believe it was Ayr, possibly Ayr, they got a new transportation station built. So there was lots of positive talk about that. And just all the different options that towns have for getting new bus stations. I don't, I don't know the term for them, the little, the little, I don't know what they're called. I can't think of the name for it.
Shelters?
The shelter, that's it, the bus shelters. So there, there was a lot of talk about, about that. And I believe it was in Ayr that they got a lot of help from Massachusetts with that. So that was pretty much it. I think Lunenburg, they talked about the Safe Streets Program for Lunenburg. Again, it all goes pretty much to town managers, but I think you can find all the information on the website if anybody listening wants to know more about those.
Okay, yeah. And anybody listening, MRPC is Monmouth Regional Planning Commission. And MJTC is Monmouth Joint Transportation Committee, or Commission, I'm not sure.
Committee.
Committee, I thought it was.
All the information can be found at mrpc.org.
Yes, and the website's great, really easy to use, so.
Do you mind if I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
Oh, plug, plug the audience, we'd get probably 10 views.
I love it.
Out of curiosity mainly, Amanda, from my, from my time on, being a representative to MRPC, have they talked anymore about their, about their ongoing issue with retirement accounts in the state and everything else? Or is that, are they still waiting on legislation? Or do you know where that whole process is, or have they not talked about it?
I don't remember hearing much about that. Their focus has mostly been on finding new employees and keeping current employees happy. They've talked about different initiatives with, you know, changing the work environment and, you know, finding a better pay scale for employees. But they have not talked about, about that since I've been there.
Wonderful. Then hopefully that is progressing appropriately, if they're not talking about it nonstop.
Hopefully it resolves itself.
All right, that rounds out our committee reports. Meeting schedule, 6:00 PM, all board meetings held at Town Hall. November 15th is tomorrow, our special town meeting. 7:00 PM, Middle High School. We have another meeting on November 28th. We have hearings, Reservoir Road, Highland Street.
They're both single-family home stormwater permits.
Single-family homes, just over an acre, right?
Yes. I would say more than just over, but yes.
Building new?
Yes, new construction.
Thank you.
Only for over an acre construction?
Yes, they are, they are both over an acre. They're both large lot, individual homes that involve longer driveways and a significant clearing effort in order to locate the, the home.
All right. Anything you want to touch on in the ongoing items?
Nope. I mean, I think we've touched on all of it, except for the MBTA communities. And I have to reach out to MRPC and have a discussion with Karen Chapman about where we're at with that.
Okay. Now, the appointment that we were looking to have tonight, I understand that Mr. Jeffries had a loss in the family recently and.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't, I don't hold, I would never hold it against him anyway, even if he didn't. But we can look forward to that happening again. Lunenburg Municipal Buildings.
I mean, as of last Wednesday, he was planning to attend, so.
So, I mean, if we want to talk about it, I think I talked about it a little bit at the last meeting. I'm not as up on it, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to talk about them and relay them. I know Adam already made his peace with it. The Brit are not believing it.
And I mean, I don't know what the, the timeline is that the Municipal Building Committee wants feedback on this.
Well, we don't really have anything to, for tomorrow's meeting.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if you want to table this and try and do it again at the next meeting.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if you want to table this and try and do it again at the next meeting.
Let, let's, let's, let's do that. We can leave it there, right? Um, rather, rather than appointment. I mean, it, it's not a problem. We can, we can take pretty much anything out of order.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. I mean, Mr. Jeffries asked for input on the, um, environmental policies that he sent around. I don't know if you want to wait and wrap those together, or if the board wants to have a discussion about them on their own. I don't necessarily have a, an opinion one way or the other.
Well, rather than appointment, can we put those in board discussions and just let, let them sit?
Yeah.
Okay. That'd be great. Any, any input on, on that from either one of you guys?
I think that's fine.
Yes.
Okay. I don't, because I don't want to pressure him to come here. Committee report, schedule, okay, ongoing items. So, um, public comment? No, no public comment? No public. Uh, board comment?
None for me.
Okay. Um, somebody, uh, one of the committee reports, Lufa Farms was brought up. Have we heard anything at all from them on the planning side?
No.
Nothing?
They are, I believe, working on developing their submission packet.
So they had the purchase and sale go through, or do you, are you?
Uh, it was stated at the Economic Development Committee on Thursday that they have signed the purchase and sale. The Chair of Economic Development said she was aware of that. Um, I don't have any confirmation of that, uh, nor have I really gone out of my way to confirm that, but.
No need, really?
I don't, I don't have any reason to doubt her.
May I ask a question about the Lufa Farms? Uh, Adam, I know we talked about this briefly sometime in the past couple of weeks. Uh, there was cons- I know people were talking on Facebook, which is a dangerous way to begin any sentence, uh, with concern about the, uh, land clearing. I don't know if it's concern, with observation about the land clearing going out in that area. And I, I think we talked about this briefly. I don't remember. And I think you said I was, the, the current owner doing some land clearing. Do they need a stormwater permit, or is like?
They have a stormwater permit from Bright Farms.
Oh, okay.
And if they were, if they went and got a forestry permit through the Commonwealth, I, I, and they're not taking the stumps up, that's not really land disturbance?
I think they, that's already happened.
They've already taken the stumps up?
No, I think that they've already gotten the forestry permit.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah. And, I mean, generally when, when you hire a forester, they don't want the stumps. That's just too much work for them. So they're going to go out, they want the, they want the board footage, so they take the trees and they leave.
Okay. I remember, we did talk about the something now. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. I, because that was something our members of the town were discussing with, again, mild concern on Facebook, but that is an avenue through which we also hear things. I did want to make sure that at least I had full info on it. Thank you.
And, and I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. Um, speaking about more Facebook conversations, the bins at Walmart.
We're working on them.
Now, I, so they've got a permit through us, don't they, Brixmore?
No. Well, Brixmore does.
Brixmore does. Brixmore's the landowner there. Brixmore's the person you need to be in touch with, right?
Hmm, no.
Or regardless.
But it, we're.
Brixmore is the one who controls those bins?
It's not.
Oh, should be.
It's, no, it's, it's so mu- it, it's, we've, we've been at this for years, and it's so much more complicated than that. The way their leases are written and who controls what land and who's responsible for what. We're in contact with the owner. They just put cameras up in the last day or two in an attempt to reduce the amount of exterior dumping.
Did they install people to watch the film?
Oh, they are according to them, responsible for cleaning the area when they empty the bins.
And not dumping it up on top of the hill?
Yes. Um, I, I think ultimately we will be asking them to remove them because it doesn't seem that this is going to slow down. And with the prohibition on throwing textiles in the trash, uh, it's only going to increase the need for someplace for people to dump textiles. You're all aware that you're no longer permitted to throw away cloth.
I was born in 72, my friend. There are so many stupid things now. But mattress is not a textile, right?
Mattresses, you're not allowed to throw away either.
Well, I know you're not allowed to throw them away, but are you allowed to throw them on a bin?
No.
Okay. So anyways, um, my understanding was that that development had a permit through this board, and they had to come to us for outdoor, outdoor.
Storage.
Storage, which, wouldn't that be outdoor storage?
No.
Okay, outdoor advertising, flower pots. They had to come to us for a permit to do that.
But that was outdoor storage of retail goods. The donation bins are a different.
Really? Do you, do we have to have a, a prohibition for crapping in the parking lot? Well, we don't, we don't say you can't, so go ahead.
I think there's decency laws that cover that.
Well, what about the bins? Is that decent?
I, I don't disagree with you.
I'm just, I'm sick of seeing the conversations on Facebook, quite honestly. And if we could, if we could find a fix to it, I would love to, to be able to say that, hey, you know, town government, woo-hoo, finally did something.
Mm-hmm.
That would be awesome. Not to put you on the spot, Adam.
That's all right.
Um, I, I mean, there, there's got to be some condition of that permit. I mean, that was what, 2006, 2008-ish? Has it been longer?
What?
Oh, wow.
I was gonna say, I, I, you mean of the whole plaza? Cause.
Yeah, it was like 90, it might even be 94.
Yeah, I bought a TI-85 calculator at that Walmart um, when I was in high school, and sir, I was teaching high school in 2006.
All right. So anyways, anyways, we still have the claws into them somehow. They're in our town.
I'll look into it.
Okay. And, um, gonna avoid those conversations. So, uh, any further board comment? Seeing none, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Excellent. Any discussion about adjourning, all in favor, please say aye. Mrs. Reed?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you, Mrs. Reed, and thank you, everyone else.
Thank you.
Have a good night.